Good morning, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. We'll give it a minute or so for people to join and then we will get started. So then we've got a shortish presentation and then we will open the floor to Q and A's. So if you have questions, please use the Q and A function. Nina will be monitoring the questions, but please feel free to put them in as and when they come up and then we'll address all questions at the end. Okay, Ben, we're pretty stable at just above 200 people have joined us. 10:02, should we get started?
Sure. All right, welcome everyone. Thank you for coming to our second, well, second of these return to play town halls. Andy, you've already gone over some of the ground rules. So here's our agenda. If everyone could respond, there will be a poll starting quickly here. If you could respond on the AGM, we're looking to set something up. And we need to get your feedback on that. Then you can see the return to play, competition plans and policies, tryout window, also with the poll referee planning, which is of huge importance. NorCal return to play social media campaign, and then we'll take questions and try and provide some answers. Before we move on, I just want to address we have some changes to which we'll go over to what we previously presented. And I want to share with you a little bit of the challenge we face. We're stepping forward and trying to offer leadership in this area. And clearly, it's something that we accept. We're providing games and competition, so we feel it's our responsibility. We are dealing with a very unclear or very unclear and in some cases murky guidance from the state. And so we're doing our best to interpret it as we are sure that many of you are. And reality is that different people and entities, organizations are interpreting it in different ways. So that's, that's a challenge for everyone. We have, so you know, our position, we have people that think we're too soft, too lenient, and we have people that think we're literally unconstitutional with some of the things that we're putting out. And so we just apolitically are sitting here trying to get kids back to the field. Our staff is totally focused on doing that. And our board, frankly, if you see one of our board members, and I think any volunteer person in youth soccer or youth sports probably deserves a hug because the incredible amount of time that our volunteer board is putting into this is it's they're going above and beyond the call of duty, and I think they do so willingly. So there may be future changes to things. This is our best effort at this time. We ask for your understanding and your support and also your feedback, both positive and negative. So without further ado, Andy.
Like Ben said, we're sending out a poll, Nina, if you want to open that up. Please fill that out over the next couple of minutes. That's going to help us set a date for our virtual AGM this summer. And as soon as we have that feedback, we'll be able to set that date fairly quick. So return to play. This is same overview of the state's guidance that we provided last week in the February 19 release. The map on the right hand side is the tiered map for counties as of yesterday, where each counties are at. And again, we'll send this out. This is linked to sort of full guidance, so please view this at your own leisure. This is the updated county by county status as of yesterday. So a good week. The vast majority of counties where there are NorCal clubs are now from what we see in a position to have competition. Three counties remain, and we're hopeful that they are in a position within the next week or two to also join everyone else. And as we can see, that's, that's quite different from last week. Left hand side is where we were last Tuesday and the right hand side is where we're at today. So a big increase in the amount of counties are ready to return. And that affects our competitions, obviously, which Jason will now touch.
That should be pretty quick today on this. Again, this is kind of what the competitions will be. You know, looking, looking really good that in most counties, we will have divisions, divisions to play. We do have our first, first return games starting this Saturday in Placer and El Dorado counties. So that, that will be starting. Some other ones will start on the 13th. Some other areas will start on the 20th. We are setting up, we have a lot already set up and we will be setting up more if your county hasn't already gotten a regional meeting set up to discuss specific competition details for each, each county and each, each of these kinds of leagues. So similar like the regional leagues, we're gonna, you know, we'll, we'll look at some of the things like when we want to start, when the league's going to start, things like that on these county meetings and most, many of you probably already have that information for your county. There are some counties that we will do probably on Monday or Tuesday of next week. And you can go to the next slide. Again, here's the, just kind of the timeline. The big thing for today, the, the first return to return to play number one. There's the application deadline tonight. However, like we've said many times, if you're not ready to apply by tonight's deadline and you need some more time, you know, we, this application will remain open and teams can apply, can apply late and we'll figure out ways to fit them in. Also, when we do these county, county based meetings, you know, there's a chance that we could extend the deadline in certain areas. Just looking at the map that Andy showed a few minutes ago, for example, like Stanislas County and Merced, we would leave this open because obviously those counties haven't even been haven't even been released to start yet. So that, that application will remain up. But it is helpful if you know you're going to play, if you can apply by today, so we can begin forming divisions and get schedules, you know, start working on at least the initial schedules. Again, you can see March 6, the return to play number one is starting in Placer and El Dorado. NorCal Summer League applications will open next week. The return to play number two application deadline is March 19th and similar to the first one. That's just the, the deadline for right now is to help us plan and start forming divisions and knowing kind of what, what it looks like in each area. So again, the earlier you can apply, the better. I understand everyone's in different situations though with fields, things like that. So that application will, will remain open after that. But the biggest thing is if you are having some of those issues that you reach out to us and we can do our best to help. I know a lot of you I've spoken with, but if you're having issues and need a little more time, just, just reach out and we will, we'll, we'll help, help it so, help so your teams can, can play if you want to. All right.
Just to touch on the, the March 11th, in the, most likely in the evening, we'll hold a just a presentation, something similar to this for coaches and managers to go over the basics. There won't be new information there that we haven't presented to DOCs. But we will send out and invite to coaches and managers later this week for that day, just a pre-competition sort of orientation meeting so that we can cover the basic details with them as well. Nina?
Hey, everybody. Everyone should have received several communications from us. The one pictured here is the one about club certification. And it's required that all clubs sign this. I am keeping a list and I will post that today so that you can kind of see live who has signed. I will be updating it a couple of times a day so you can check in and see if your club is up to date. The informed consent, again, we've provided some templates for you. You are not required to use our template, but you are required to have signature from every participant and keep a record of that within your club. You do not need to share that with us. Passes, you have to have all your kids carded in order for them to participate in competition. And you do need a roster for the weekend when your team begins playing. If you need assistance creating rosters, we have in our club resources section of our website, you can find all the admin help for GOT Soccer. And if you need more help than that, feel free to email me and I will be glad to assist you. Pre-game communication, that is, if you're playing in El Dorado and Placer County, you probably receive something from Jason that will be going directly to teams that are participating. So if you haven't gotten anything because your team is not yet scheduled, don't worry about it. As soon as you have a schedule, you will receive on a Monday a bunch of links and help and guidance for the week. Of note in that email, we would like you to use the chat system to communicate with your opponent. We'd love for you to do that Monday, Tuesday, as far in advance as possible to say, hey, you know, at our facility, masks are required, so you'll need to show up with, with masks. Or, you know, please enter through gate B or whatever it is for safety that you would like to let your opponents know when they arrive at your home field. That's going to be a huge, huge help. And then I know a lot of people have had questions about the competition credits from last spring. So in our FAQ, which is part of the policies document, it's at the bottom. There is a link there where you can fill out a form to use your credit. We really, really would prefer that teams do this through their club so that we get a list of all teams participating and we can apply that credit in bulk. Team by team would be obviously a harder accounting situation for us. And in the same way that we gave issued refunds to a club, we would like to issue credits as a club as well. If this doesn't work because individual teams pay, of course, we'll be happy to work with you, but keeping it as simple as possible would obviously help us. I think that's me. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Nina. Okay, like Nina referenced, last weekend, we sent out this to everyone, our return to play competition policies with FAQs at the bottom. So as Nina referenced, the competition credits are in there. We believe, and thank you, by the way, for everyone who sent questions during the town hall last week after the town hall. We believe that those questions are answered in here as, as everything that came up. But if you go through this and there's still questions, please reach out to us. We're trying to, as Ben said, start trying to navigate this as best as possible. There were a couple of changes made to that document, which are highlighted in yellow in the, in the document, a couple of amendments. And we advise everyone to double check your club's plans with your local public health authorities and facility providers. All clubs are obviously subject to, to local rules and regulations. So we're trying to provide as best guidance as possible, but we advise you to double check locally as well. A few little clarifications and alterations based on some of that guidance changing and some of the things we communicated last week in the town hall. So last week, we communicated that players would be tied to one team per weekend. That is no longer the case. The board have decided against that. So players will not be tied to one team per weekend for NorCal competitions. Last week, we also communicated that testing was not required. On further review, our messages changed because the interpretation of the state's guidance has been very not clear. We no longer have a legal opinion on the topic of testing. And we will defer to decisions made at local health authorities and facility providers about testing. Ben, anything to add on that?
Yeah, just, we have, from what we know, there are three cities that are requiring testing 13s and above or 14s and above. But CIF, Cal North, other, and to other sports, read it differently. And so our, we received some, a little bit of pushback from one of our board members, and I think it was appropriate on saying, how could this be, how could we opine so concretely? And so when we really looked at it again, it's too ambiguous. And so we just decided that we can't have a legal opinion on something that there's no way to have one. And so that's why we reached that decision. But you still may have either facility providers or your local health authorities may require, and you're going to have to follow, follow their lead.
There's also a clarification on out of state travel. A number of questions came up from a number of different clubs after we sent this guidance out on Sunday. And we've included it as an addition to the FAQs. So the question, the specific question has been, what if my team decides to travel out of state for competitions? Will our club or team be removed from competitions? So the state's guidance states that teams may not travel out of state. For our competitions, for NorCal competitions, we can only control and, and set rules for what goes on in NorCal competitions. The state do advise a 10 day self quarantine for any out of state travel. And that would be the expectation from a NorCal point of view. So the expectation will be that any individual who travels out of state, whether it be in a team or individually, would not participate in NorCal competitions for the 10 day self quarantine period as prescribed by the state. And that's expectation from NorCal. Failed to do so may result in a sanction from NorCal to observe that 10 day self quarantine from NorCal competitions.
Yeah. And in this, we just, we're asking for, clearly, we can't police this. And we know there are some people that believe that we should. And, but we can't. And so we're asking that if teams travel, that we'll work with them to make sure that they're observing the 10 day quarantine and we'll work our schedules around it. And so that's it.
Jason, any guidance on that with teams traveling out of state?
I think it, this is a state, it's still a state. The state says that you shouldn't travel. So that's a state. So I don't, but I think basically what we would do is on the scheduling is, you know, all this information's public. We just wouldn't schedule the next weekend, but you need to make sure that it's communicated, communicated to the league so we know that we can schedule around it. So another, you know, if something does happen and the other, the other club isn't affected. And make sure you have insurance because you don't have US club insurance.
Okay, there's a number of questions coming in on these. We'll address all those at the end, but keep them coming, please. So tryout window. We communicated last week that we are looking to provide dates for you this week on the tryout windows and we are. This text at the top is our definition of the tryout window. Period where players can try out without DOC permission. The Board of Directors met yesterday. Their proposed dates for the tryout window this year would be May 10th to June 27th. Nina's going to put a poll out now. Please have a look at what's on the screen and give us your feedback as to whether this works for your club. We want to get this confirmed as soon as possible. The board are looking to provide a longer window than normal to provide clubs more flexibility to reinform teams for the new season. And this would be subject to the RAC's meeting again and being able to further define within that longer window. Both the start and the end date of a regional window or potentially different windows for different age groups, which is pretty common in most regions normally. So if this, if these dates work, which we think they do for most clubs and we hope they do for most clubs, we'll be able to confirm this in the next couple of days. And then everyone will be able to plan our RAC meetings to see if that's a window that the RACs want to further define and set the tryout dates.
And hey, if I can add here, we have, even within our board, we have people that within their club may not do tryouts and they just may offer players a spot and they think that after a year of not playing to have tryouts doesn't, kids shouldn't have to do it. And we, we absolutely support that, but we also understand that there are a lot of different situations in the 270 plus clubs that we have. And we want to give you the flexibility to do what you need to do. And so we have clubs that do not hold tryouts and we have clubs that will not hold tryouts this year and just reform and offer player spots. And so we hope that this provides you the flexibility to reinform your teams in the manner that you would like to. And we just want to get out of the way of it.
Okay, we have NorCal Referee Director Mo Shifai with us. Mo, you like to take over here?
Yes. Good morning, everyone. The main topic today, I'll keep it very short, is the new referees and the clinics that are becoming available to us. California North Referee Administration is working on providing each club to request for new referee courses. There will be no cost to you. The dates are listed here for the month of March and April. The nice thing about this is if you request it, then you would have access to the information about the referees that are attending your courses. And that's very crucial right now. So you could pass that information to your assigners or your referee coordinator. The rest of the information is pretty self explanatory. If there's any question that you have, you have my email listed here. Please get ahold of me and I will walk you through it. Once the California North opens up there in the field session that are live and so forth, which would be probably in the month of May or June. At that point, then the clubs are required to pay $300 for requesting for a course, or you could contact me and NorCal will sponsor your course for you. That is all I have. Thank you.
This information will send out the presentation so you can go through this information yourselves. There's a lot more than I went through. One, one thing to touch on, Mo, would be the webinar next Thursday about law, changes to the laws of the game.
Yes, Tim Whalen, ex FIFA referee and also MLS instructor, going to be going over the changes to the laws of the game for 2020, 2021, next Thursday at 7:00 PM. March 11th for us. I highly recommend for coaches and DOC, perhaps president, to attend this. And the link is available there. If there's any questions on it, please let me know.
And we'll record that and send it out via another email to DOC's coaches after the fact. So if you're not able to make it next Thursday evening, it's one that we'll send out afterwards, but we encourage all DOCs and coaches to, to be aware of those changes to the laws of the game for the season. Okay, just to touch quickly on our social media, we're running a return to play campaign. I'm sure all the clubs out there are doing a lot more on social media as we ramp up to competition again. We ask you to please tag NorCal in things, use a hashtag NorCal Return to Play. We'll be running some competitions after weekends of play on things like goal of the week, photo of the week, video of the week. So yeah, trying to get as much excitement about getting back on the field and getting into competition as possible. If you have any questions about that, please reach out to Evan Ream, who's NorCal's Communication Manager. Nick, do you want to touch on this webinar we have at 12 today?
Yeah, just a quick plug, Santo Rivas, I think a lot of people have had the chance to, to meet him or work with him. One of the leads at US Soccer in the Coach Education Department. He runs the Director of Coaching, Academy Director License Course for US Soccer. He's going to give a webinar today at 12. So targeted for DOCs, but anybody's welcome. You know, coaches, board members, so please join. Should be an interesting conversation. Plan to go probably 45, 50 minutes Q and A. So hope to see you on. We also have another webinar coming up from the Women's Committee. And that is currently scheduled for the 24th at 11:00 AM. So please also consider that one on your schedules.
Thanks, Nick. David, do you want to touch on Coach Ed quickly? I don't have on the presentation, but I can bring it up.
No, no problem. Just a few seconds. Last week, we hosted three very good clinicians. Mike Yvara, FC Dallas, and Kirk Young Development, Andrew Fistonic, Deputy Academy Director at Hujuk Split, and Roberto Navas, Goalkeeping Methodology. He's the Chilean National Team Goalkeeper. They're all available. If you go up, Andy, just to show everyone. If you go to education, yeah, to the top, up to the top, education, yeah. And coaching education. And there, and then it's, it's basically a rerun of all the webinars are listed there. So very good. Click there, read more. They're all there. You can get video recording of them along with many other ones. We don't have any next week, but the following week we have Antel Vergia from US Soccer, former Dutch National Team coach and lead instructor for US Soccer, going over US Soccer's methodology, in particular to their A and B license. And yeah, we're planning more, so keep checking them out.
Great. Thanks a lot, David. And that is, I believe, it from our presentation.
So for Q and A, we, number one, I put the link in the chat, which takes you directly to the front page of our website, which is where you will find the competition policies and FAQ. Should have received in your email a couple of times, but that's the quickest place to send your parents, your players, everybody. You know, share that article out with everyone and they will have the same information that you have. So one kind of broad topic was benches, field setup, canopies. I think I can address that, but if anyone wants to jump in, we, you know, the, the guidance is stay six feet apart. So if you can, you know, create a setup where you're providing that safety measure, I don't think there's a specific way we're asking that clubs do this. You know, have your guys bring a chair so they can space out. If you can put up a canopy and everyone can spread out, use a canopy. We're not saying you have to put spectators on the opposite side from players, but if that's available, that's probably a better option for staying six feet apart. So that, that's just a general guideline to follow. We don't have a prescription for it. Anyone want to add?
Yeah, I would just say it's, it's up to, you know, the, the home team's facility and, and they determine, you know, those kinds of things because and again, that's something we can talk about in the county based meetings also that we're going to have about the field, field team setup.
And someone asked, do we know what cities are requiring testing or what areas? Can anyone address that one?
I only, I know two of them.
I can do a general you know, because I've, I've been kind of looking at a lot of this with, with clubs. Right now, it seems in the San Mateo area. There is a lot of, a lot of those clubs. It sounds like almost that whole county, almost. I don't know if it is a whole county, but a lot of the clubs in that county, they've been interpreting the testing as as needed for the elders. And I believe in a little bit, even in the one or two in Santa Clara had that also.
Mountain View and Mill Valley concretely.
And San Mateo has been saying that.
Another huge topic, Andy, probably for you is guest players. You know, can kids play on multiple teams? Can they play high school? Can they play baseball?
Our guidance, so our guidance has changed from one team per weekend to not requiring that. I'm just trying to bring up the language we have in our policies.
I got the state language if you want it.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you wanted, I mean, the Yeah, if you wanted, I mean, the the board wanted to follow the state guidance on this as much as possible. Uh yeah.
Leave that out?
Yeah, absolutely. So this is under the other general guidance, which is strongly encouraged, but not required from the state. So you're strongly encouraged to limit participation by athletes and coaches during practice and competition to one team and refrain from participating with more than one team over the same season or time period. For larger teams, limit mixing by establishing stable, smaller trading groups for drills and conditioning. So you are strongly encouraged to to limit this, um but it is not a, it is not a mandate that you can't do it.
There's no uh rule changes to NorCal competitions based on this.
Um some people have been asking about player passes and rosters. Um it's absolutely essential that they have a pass. They cannot play without one. And if you're having issues with with rosters, a sports engine, with God Soccer, please get in touch today and we'll try to help you solve that. If there's not a solution, you know, we always try to be flexible on the weekends. We we obviously want kids on the field no matter what and we will work with you individually or as a club to make sure that those kids who have a pass in their hand can play. Um anything else? I think I think that kind of covered the general, most of the general questions. Um a lot of the information people are asking for is in that um competition policies and FAQ. It's again, right on the front of our website. I think it's the second article listed. And um all the information about credits, all the information about everything we've discussed today is in that document, so if you're not hearing the answers that you need, please go and read that.
Nina, there's a couple specifically on guest playing. Um just to be clear, uh at no point in our competitions do we have guests playing from other clubs into um your club for NorCal competitions. But there's always a flexibility to move players between rosters within the same club, if they have a US Club Pass from the same club. A couple of questions about access to the informed consent. That was sent out last week. It will be on this presentation. Um there's a, there's a hyperlink on this presentation where you can get the template for informed consent if you wish to use it for your club.
There were a couple more questions about travel and um you know, whether, if you're tested when you return, does that if you bring your negative test, can you, can they return to play, you know, earlier than ten days? I I don't think that we have the answers to that. I think it's, you know, you you need to look at the state's guidelines. We've included a link to the travel advisory and we just need to do our, do our best to maintain, you know, what the state is asking and.
Yeah, we don't have an answer for that at this time. We'll look into it. Um currently, the policy that the board has set is um the players would not be able to participate in NorCal competitions for that ten days if if you travel to that state. We'll look into the the um the negative testing and reducing that from the state guidance and um we'll communicate if anything changes.
I'm just getting some very specific questions about cards and and I'll just email you. People that are um asking things about whatever, I'll I'll email those that didn't get answers today. Um what one about um spectators, the state's language just says uh limit to immediate household members for the strict purpose of age-appropriate supervision. This is up to your interpretation. I mean, we again, I think keeping the numbers small and keeping distance is the goal and keeping everybody safe. We want, you know, our competitions, obviously, we all have the goal of having them continue all the way into the fall and beyond. So the more we can do to keep people safe, the better outcome we're going to have with that.
Gabe, there's a question, pardon me, Gabe, there's a question for you, US Club, um about when will instruction come out on a national registration system regarding moving to God Soc?
Yeah, we don't have the specific dates yet, but uh we're internally talking about, we're we're behind the scenes right now transferring all the data to uh basically match up clubs and who their registrar is or who their director is. So right now, that's what we're doing behind the scenes. Um but I believe I've I've heard April, May as a, as a date that we're going to start doing tutorials with the clubs and I've also heard that uh you know, that's going to be on a mass scale, but I've also heard that God Sport has made the commitment to work with clubs one-on-one. So you know, should clubs need additional help, uh they could do that. And then the other thing that is being floated around right now is the date of registration. Historically, we've always opened up our registration July first, but because of the transition this year, I believe we're going to start the process as early as June first. So I don't think that data's been confirmed, but that is what's being uh discussed and it is probably very likely. So I think what we're talking about is June one, opening up the process for clubs to go in and start registering their players with July one being the first date that those pass cards would be valid.
Question about uniforms, you uh we just asked that everyone wear the same thing. We understand that some clubs have not been able to order uniforms yet. So if you could, you know, grab a white T-shirt for every player and put some numbers on there with tape, do the best you can to make it look the same and you know, you know, as a uniform so that it's not confusing for the opponent or referee. Um
That's covered in the FAQs, right, Nina?
Yes, and Andy, um someone's mentioning that the handbook says there are penalties for forfeits and that we have fines for that. Um will that be more loose based on, you know, if someone shows up and safety guidelines aren't met and they don't want to participate?
Jason?
I mean, if it's, if it's directly like guidelines aren't being followed based on what we've put out, then of course, there's no fine or anything for that. You know, if it's, if it's just a team not showing up and not communicating to the other team, I mean, there there could be, I mean, obviously, that's a different situation, but you know, again, I think what Nina said earlier about your communication prior is very important, so you know, communicating through God Soccer on on a Monday or Tuesday with your opponent, letting them know, you know, to be right now, it looks like in areas, uh every city has different kind of requirements possibly at their facility. So it's important that that's communicated to your opponent um prior. Um so that, so there's no kind of surprises when people show up to the field. That that that's very important for uh for for competitions this spring to make sure that that communication is going back and forth. And again, if you need help with anything um with your opponent or whatever's going on, you can reach out um and and, you know, we're happy to help and get, our our main goal is to get these games played and uh and in a safe way.
Hey, Andy, can you just pull up the or put on the screen the competition policies again? I think it's important just to point out, because a lot of the questions that people are asking is you know, uh just, just so you'll see, anything with a number one by it is is almost verbatim language from the state. So we've just given that to you, so you have the information. Uh if you go down a little bit, Andy. Um and anything with a two by it is kind of our interpretation and our um effort to make sure that people are, you know, cooperating and most of these were um things that were strongly suggested. Um but the number twos are from from us and the number ones are directly from the state, so you know, if you're asking a question about a number one item, um we're just going to keep referring you back to the state's guidelines because that's what we're trying to adhere to as well. If it's a, if it's something that's a two, you know, it's kind of our interpretation of that and our understanding of it and our effort to keep people safe.
And and related to soccer specifically in some of those cases, so I think that's one of the big, that's a big thing with the number twos on there. It's, you know, interpreting their guidance for soccer in some, a lot of those cases.
And how it impacts NorCal competitions.
Uh maybe one more about fields and how do you, one game, two games per field at a time as it relates to to print? Uh seven v seven, nine v nine, et cetera.
Jason, you want to take on?
Um which question, so it's
Jack Rosier, final question right now in the, can you clarify one game, two teams per field at a time, how it relates to different formats, eleven v eleven, ninety-nine, seventy-seven?
I mean, I, again, this is, we're like, in a lot of ways, we're we're similar with the state guidelines and this is something from the state. Um you know, I I I think the biggest thing is, you know, trying, not having teams just loitering around the field when there's a, you know, eleven v eleven game going or a nine v nine game. And having enough time so one group can clear out and the next one can come in. I think that's that's, you know, kind of the the main, main point on that.
Yeah, I watched this this weekend. I visited um three different sites, watched four different clubs and including one that had eleven v eleven games and they had smaller games. So with the way I looked at it was there were, at one time, there were three fields on two full-size fields. And the club did a very good job of rotating teams through. Parents were on a fence outside. Uh not all were wearing masks, not all were constantly, but most were adhering to the guidelines and there seemed to be a great spirit. Um and of course, it's, it was one club, but I didn't see anyone having to go around and enforce things. Everyone was just in the spirit of getting their children to play soccer, which hopefully is the way that everyone can approach all of this. I see the one asking about visitors coming. If you know that you have parents that don't want to wear a mask, and then ask them politely to not go. And it's regardless of what your beliefs are on all of this, there are um state guidelines where everyone's hands are tied. And so there should be a a respect for the guidelines and for the people that are hosting these games so that children can play football. And so um that's our hope is that you'd go apolitically into this without any belief on about what um whether or not to wear a mask, whether or not it should be testing, whether or not it should have fans and just be respectful of this. And I'm I'm quite, uh I believe that from what I've seen so far, that that will be the case.
Andy, can you address the question just above that? Because that was one that we talked about prior to the start of the meeting uh with regards to Santa Clara County.
Uh the Santa Clara County, you're moving the um quarantine for, is it a hundred and twenty miles or a hundred and fifty miles?
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty. Uh I can read it. I read it after. It's a, yeah, I mean, that's a county um.
Yeah, well, I guess, I guess my point is is just that it, just because Santa Clara County has lifted that, it's still the state guidelines that do not allow out-of-state competition at this time, despite what Santa Clara County might say.
Well, I don't think it's a hundred, the order, Santa Clara County will lift its ten-day travel quarantine order on Wednesday. They announced the order, which was put in place in late November, required people coming into the county for more than one hundred and fifty miles away to quarantine for ten days. I don't think you can get out of Santa Clara County into another state in a hundred and fifty miles. I think it's further. So this is something that most counties, I think, had already adjusted.
It it's a different quarantine from the the state's travel advisory on out-of-state travel. Um it was a, it was a separate one imposed by Santa Clara County that I don't believe relates to the state's um guidance.
Andy, can I just reiterate one of the points here to kind of help with this as well? Everybody needs to keep in mind that you have perhaps multiple levels uh that you're going to need to follow rules, all right? So you know, the state guidelines, the county guidelines, the facility provider guidelines, um you know, park and rec, school districts, whatever it may be. And whenever these two things uh conflict with one another, you have to follow the stricter between the two is is our understanding. This is going to be complicated as we are kind of traveling between communities to do this. So one of the critical things that you need to make sure you're doing is communicating with your opponent the week prior to games. Um I know we've said that earlier, but you know, for the, for the interest of things going well and smoothly and reducing conflict on game days as much as possible, you need to really push team-to-team communications, club-to-club communications before games. Um set expectations. We want to have as few surprises to coaches, players, parents showing up on Saturday morning as possible. We want them to know what they're walking into, what's expected of them. And that way, we will reduce as much as possible any kind of dramas or problems that happen on the game fields.
I'm just going to send everyone over to that document. Once again, I'm getting more questions about where can I find the informed consent template? Um can you please address the mask policy? These are all in in the document that's on the front page of our website titled, you know, NorCal Return to Play Competition Policies FAQ. So those answers are there. The template's there with a link, so.
And if you can't find the answers you're looking for, please fill out with us. We'll do our best to help. I think, Ben, we should be good to close out.
Okay, yeah, I um on behalf of the board uh and football and the staff, um our, we really a request that everyone um adopt the proper spirit. And this is an apolitical one, regardless of what you think about mandates, guidelines, um the pandemic, what have you. Our goal is to get children back on the field. And I must admit, I went and I I told our, some of our staff that I'll deny it if they say it, but I actually shed a tear when I visited Santa Rosa United, Trione, as I walked out and saw children starting to play soccer for the first time. And then I went to three other clubs over the weekend. I heard children and parents talking about their children's excitement. I heard children actually talking that they get to play and I'll just say it was an ECNL club and the kids were, one kid said something, does this mean we play North Coast? Which I thought was actually great, that there um would be in a situation that they don't, they're going to play clubs that may, maybe they don't normally play once they get to a certain level. Um we are allowing MLS Next, ECNL, anyone with the US Club Pass that's sanctioned to play NorCal Premier, we're allowing them in this competition or in our competitions. We're going to be as flexible as possible to allow as many kids as possible to play. We, we plead with you that you impress this spirit upon your membership and that we do everything possible with clear early communication to make sure that this goes off as much as possible without a hitch. I personally am optimistic after having watched hours of soccer and albeit was in club soccer last weekend and games. Most people are just being pragmatic, practical, reasonable folks and doing what's required. And so um I trust that that will be the case. So um this weekend, we will have the first return to game in Placer County. I'm going to carpool over there with Jase. No, I'm joking. Uh I'm going to go over and and watch some games. Um and I can't wait for this to be across the state and then gradually will prove that um this is, we should just keep having guidelines fall by the wayside increasingly as numbers keep going down and soon we will return to normal. So thank you to the staff and thank you for everyone. I know out there countless hours of work, extra work going on in the clubs and we thank you for what you've done on behalf of the children in the last eleven months. So thank you.
Thank you, everyone. See you on the field.